Does she want? Todd, do you want this?
We're gonna start with policy tonight, right?
Alright. Nice packed house. Pressure. For whenever you're ready.
Go ahead.
Welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. Nice to see so many people in the audience. I'd like to start by, even if you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Make a motion, accept the consent agenda and adjourn from previous meetings.
Second.
Okay, it's been made in the second, but I do have a little discussion around the minutes. Tina, the only change that I saw was on line 180. I believe the motion to adjourn was made by Darryl. Typically, the chairman doesn't make that motion.
Yeah, I missed that one.
So it's swap your best thing.
I think Darryl made the motion, I seconded it. And then followed up with the roll call. Other than that, we okay with?
Yep.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can I ask? Thank you. Alright. The tenth agenda includes the minutes from our last meeting and the oath to pay bills. Next up on the agenda is interested citizens. Anybody wanna come forward? Interested citizens? Open the mic. Kind of like the Bloomberg Cafe. Alright, next up, we have mid-year SIP reviews. And we'd like to start with Russell Street Schools' school improvement plan and the mid-year review. So, Principal Vazilo. It's all yours.
New mark, a little bit of the wrong. Thanks Chuck. Each time I get to talk to a group, including the school committee, I can't overstate how fortunate I feel to be a part of the Russell Street team. It's been over half the year. And I was actually just talking to my family recently that it was March 16th last year that I was offered this position. There was far less snow, it was much warmer. And I can't tell you how fortunate I feel to be a part of this team. The students, the staff, the community at Russell Street is a tremendous one, and I couldn't be prouder to be part of that team. So, it is my honor to be here tonight to talk about some of the work that we're doing. I'm not gonna take up too much of our time because, as you can tell, we have a large crowd in the audience from Russell Street. We have some of our fabulous teachers and students who are here with their families tonight to talk about some of the great work that they're doing. And I wanna make sure I leave some time for them. But I will talk a little bit about some of the great work that's going on in our building. When I got to Russell Street School, in the fall, I inherited a school improvement plan that was halfway through a two-year cycle. Mrs. Hall and the team at Russell Street had put together an outstanding school improvement plan that was well on its way and more than half-done when I got here. So, I don't claim to take a great deal of credit for the work that's been done. The team is fabulous, the school is humming along. But we have had a busy year to continue that plan. So I'll talk a little bit about the work that's been done, and then I'm gonna hand it over to teachers and students to talk about some of the things that they've been doing. You folks have our mid-year update in front of you. I put it together a little bit in order of our school district goals. Our school district goal number one is curriculum instruction and assessment. We have done quite a bit of work in Atlas Rubicon around mapping this year. And so, we have just about completed at each grade our mapping in science. And we're underway in ELA, which is probably, as Dr. Jamien would concur, I think, our largest mapping endeavor. And will be our largest mapping endeavor, but we're well underway. We have used multiple early release days for that, and teachers have used significant time on their own. And we've used some substitute time to try to get them well on their way. So, that's a big endeavor. It helps us align with the Common Core, it helps us figure out where we need to supplement, it helps us make sure that we're doing what the state is requiring of us. Also noted on there is the third year of response intervention, or what we call RTI. That was well underway when I got here as well. And again, I've talked about this with the school committee, and I've talked about it with parents over and over, having worked in multiple school districts across the state. There aren't many that can claim that they're doing the amount of work that is being done in Littleton for students to make sure that kids are getting what they need to be moving on a trajectory at their instructional level. And response intervention has a lot to do with that. So, response intervention is three tiers of reading instruction. And noted on your sheet are our grade-level data meetings, as well as our progress monitoring meetings. And that is a great deal of work for our instructors, our faculty. Many of our instructional assistants take on small groups during that time. And that's been continued this year. And we're seeing great progress for our students. So, those are two major initiatives in areas of curriculum instruction and assessment that have continued. And we're seeing great progress. One directly for students and one ultimately indirectly as we look at the mapping. Excuse me. School district goal number two is professional development. I highlighted for you some of the PD that we've done for our faculty and staff this year. As we look forward, we're looking at major initiatives in rolling out the Common Core state standards, as well as a new teacher evaluation system. So we've had professional development in both of those areas. More overview sessions for our staff, and those are areas that we'll continue to do professional development in as we move forward into the next year. We've done some technology professional development in Google Drive. The district is moving forward, you've heard us talk about that. Cloud technology and trying to give collaborative experiences for faculty and students. So we did some professional development around that. And also, Ideal is the company that we've used for our RTI experiences. Our Ideal consultant did some professional development for our faculty around collaborative literacy activities. And one of the things we've talked about at Russell Street a lot this year is student engagement and how to really make sure that we're raising student engagement whenever possible and providing activities that are highly engaging to students. And so, that professional development gave us some building blocks for taking a look at the activities that we're doing in literacy and evaluating the level of engagement they might provide for students. I'm gonna skip over the next block and drop to the bottom, which is school district goal number five, which is technology. It's numbered incorrectly on the copy that you have, a little typo there. As you know, each building began use of a mobile iPad cart this year, and that's beginning to roll out at Russell Street School, much to the enjoyment of students. I think, you know, as you talk to the students at Russell Street, iPads are a huge hit. And we'll begin to be able to put mobile technology in the hands of students in the learning environment. And the more we talk in education, the more that's the model that we believe is going to really make a difference educationally. We know at the middle school, we're seeing a bring-your-own-device environment. We believe at the elementary level, being able to have mobile devices that we can give students in the learning environment is very powerful. So, you know, yes, we have a computer lab, and yes, we can bring students there, but we wanna be able to put technology in students' hands in the moment so that when teachers are teaching, they can provide instructional technology as opposed to trying to bring the learning to the technology. So, the mobile iPad cart, I think, is going to be very powerful. We'll be looking to add to our mobile technology repertoire at Russell Street. Mrs. Rogers has worked with our faculty around everyday math and an assessment differentiation system, which allows teachers to use technology around everyday math to be able to tweak the assessments that they use so that it's not sort of, it used to be, open the math book, you pull out an assessment, you photocopy it, and everybody gets the same test. It's not like that anymore. Technology allows us to take a look and differentiate the assessments that we have, to be able to use formative sort of dip-sticking assessments, to be able to tweak the assessments to make sure that they fit our students. More and more, the curriculum that we're using is allowing us to be more dynamic with our students. So that was something that we did this year. And as you visit Russell Street, you'll see that we've added flat panel TVs and Apple TVs to both our conference room and lobby. One more aesthetic and welcoming in the lobby and one more practical in the conference room to add some sort of meaningful interactivity to some of the meetings that we have in the conference room. So those are technology upgrades that you've seen. I'm gonna jump up to the next box, which is school district goal three, and school district goal four, which are community and communication, climate and culture, which we've done a lot of work in. Some of the feedback, when I got here and came through the transition, was that some folks feel like Shaker Lane, you know, is the little kids and warm and fuzzy, and they get to Russell Street and it's to transition school to middle school, and it doesn't feel as warm and fuzzy. And so, I think one of the things that the school improvement plan was attempting to do was try to bridge that gap and make families feel more welcome and more connected to Russell Street School. So, some of the things that we've been trying to do is connect more with families in the community. And so, we are working to do a weekly parent email blast. So, those of you that are Russell Street families know that you get a weekly email blast from me that has input from each of our grade levels, to some degree, and our specialists. We have begun regular use of Twitter for folks that want to have, follow us on Twitter. That not only is announcements from Russell Street, but also celebrates our students. It celebrates our student work and work that students are doing. And if folks don't wanna follow us on Twitter, that populates the front page of our website and celebrates student work in that way. We did recently create and send a small parent staff outreach survey to try to get some input from our constituencies as we think about our new school improvement plan. And then, I'm not gonna go into too much depth about these 'cause that's what I'm gonna let the teachers and students talk about. We're beginning to use our technology creatively, not only in the classroom, which we do a ton of. It's not really anymore teachers thinking about, how do we, how can we use this technology? I mentioned before, I think it used to be, how do we go to the lab? And what should we do in the lab? Now we have teachers that are thinking, how can we weave technology into our everyday learning? And our teachers are really doing that regularly. Now they're thinking, how can we creatively empower and engage students to use this technology in new innovative ways? And so, you're gonna hear tonight about teachers and students that are using that technology to communicate in creative and innovative ways. And for instance, you're gonna hear about Mrs. Raposa's class doing monthly news updates, where students update their families about what's going on in their classroom via technology. And Mrs. McGregor's class is gonna talk about a TV show that they put together about some learning that they did that actually aired on our Littleton Cable television station. So, when you hear about the work that they've done, it's gonna highlight technology at Russell Street, and it was all done on iPads, and it's, you know, sure, it's technology. But I think what's important to understand is it's about student engagement, and it's about collaboration, and it's about creativity, and it's about outreach to the community, and it's about outreach to parents. And it's about how teachers took that technology and wove it into some creative ideas in their room, not just, you know, how can we bring something to technology? And so, I'm not gonna talk too much more about that 'cause I wanna not take the luster off of what you're gonna hear from the folks who took the time to come tonight. Before I introduce them and turn it over, do folks have questions for me? Okay, great. So, we do have folks here tonight. Mrs. Heidi McGregor teaches fourth grade. Mrs. Laura Raposa teaches fifth grade. And we have some fabulous students and outstanding all-around kids here. Megan DiLorenzo and Tyler Merrill are fourth graders. Tyler Prue and Rose Cantrell are fifth graders. And I'm drawing a complete blank about who's gonna go first. Mrs. Raposa's class is gonna go first, so I'm gonna invite them to come up. Thank you.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here tonight and share with you some of the exciting things happening at Russell Street School. We'd like to share with you how our class is using technology to communicate with parents in the larger Littleton community. Traditionally in the past, our class would write a newsletter each month and send it home with students. We then went to post the newsletter onto our class website. Through the use of an iPad and the internet, we are now able to record a class newscast and share it with families immediately. There are multiple reasons why we record the newscast, such as to reach out to the community, to provide students with authentic presentation experiences and leadership opportunities. The entire newscast is written and directed by students. Each month, students are eagerly engaged to work as a team and create this group project. Tyler and Rose are here to give you more information.
If you're wondering how we put our monthly newscasts together, let me tell you. We start by choosing an article with or without a partner. Then we write the article with our partners. After we proofread and edit, we practice presenting our articles. Lastly, we present the articles to the class while the iPad records us. After, students help to edit and add music before we share with the community through YouTube. What are some of the 21st century skills we are acquiring by doing this project? As students who are preparing for a complex life and work environment in the 21st century, it is so important for us to participate in activities that require far more than thinking skills and content knowledge. We need to have the ability to adapt, to change, be flexible, manage goals and times, guide and lead others, and be responsible to others. By creating these newscasts, we are learning to work together, to be more responsible, and become better leaders. My favorite part is getting to watch the videos after we've recorded it because you get to see your classmates' reaction to their presentation. My parents' favorite part is getting to see my classmates' personalities. My favorite part of the newscast is recording and watching my classmates present because it is so fun to see and hear what other people report on. My parents really like it and think it is a better idea than the letter because it gets everyone involved. Here's what some of our classmates think of our newscast. Helena says, "My favorite part is getting responses from classmates about what their parents thought of the newscast because some of the responses can be funny." Matt says, "My favorite part is watching it after we record because we get to see how funny everybody is."
Good job, you guys.
I'd like to invite Mrs. McGregor and her students up to join us.
Hello, I'm Mrs. McGregor. I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about a project that we did in our classroom. Hopefully, some of you might have actually watched it. It aired on Littleton Community Television last week several times during the school vacation week. The students in my class read a story called "James and the Giant Peach" by Roald Dahl. And in order to get into that deep comprehension that we as teachers are really trying to stretch our students into, we're really trying to get them to not just read stories on the surface, we want them to get into it deeply. That we created this project where we would make a variety television show about James and the Giant Peach. And the students were able to work in small groups. They were able to choose what they wanted to do. And then, they just created this fantastic television show that we were able to air on television. So I've brought Megan DiLorenzo here and Tyler Merrill. And Megan's gonna talk a little bit about her experience with the, being able to actually make choices for her project and being able to be creative.
When we were first introduced to the project, Mrs. McGregor told us that we could choose to make our project about geography, science, friendship, poetry, or interviews. After we had broken up into our groups, we could pretty much do whatever we wanted as long as it had something to do with the book "James and the Giant Peach." I really liked this project because we had the freedom to be creative and do whatever we wanted. I chose the geography group because I wanted to make something artistic, like a map.
Thanks, Megan. Thank you very much. And Tyler's gonna talk a little bit about his experience collaborating with his classmates. So once they formed into their groups and they started to find their topic of what they were gonna do for their television show, they had to get along with each other and decide what they were going to do. So Tyler's gonna talk about that a little bit.
So, I chose the science group. And we had some troubles deciding what project we were going to do. So we split up into two teams. One team tested the density of a peach and the other test did the anatomy of grasshopper. So we just had two science segments of the show. My favorite part of the show was pretty much also being able to do whatever we wanted to do and just have the freedom to do that.
So Tyler, let me just ask you one follow-up question. In your team, in your science team, how did you decide who would do which job?
Well, we figured out who was best at what. And then, we let the people who were good at things do what they were good at. And then, the people who really didn't care what they were gonna do just took the other jobs.
Okay, alright, that works out. Okay, so we've put together a video montage of our two projects. And we're gonna share that with you now. With any luck, it'll work. We did it earlier today. And it's about one minute long, but it just shows you, you'll see some images of the fifth-grade Team Raposa group, and it's woven in with the fourth-grade James and the Giant Peach variety show.
I couldn't be more proud of these teachers and these students. And I hope that, as parents and families, you are proud of your children and you're proud of your school district. And I say this over and over and over again. I've been other places, and this does not happen everywhere. I think that this is a highlight of student engagement. It's a highlight of effective use of instructional technology. And it's clearly a highlight of students who enjoyed their projects. And clearly, teachers who didn't just open a teaching manual and teach exactly what it said in the teaching manual. So, I can't thank Mr. Raposa, Mrs. McGregor enough. I can't thank these families enough. And I can't thank Tyler and Tyler and Megan and Rose enough for coming tonight. So thank you very much.
While the chairman is making his way up, I wanna say, guys, thanks very much for coming tonight. That was fantastic. It's fun to watch, and it's fun to see what you guys are doing in school. Not just, I mean, most of you know that I've got a couple of kids in the schools. It's nice to see a different perspective where kids are smiling, they're excited about what they're doing in the classroom. And it just, I'm a little bit emotional. I'm getting a little bit of a talk right now. I mean, it's 'cause Tyler combed his hair. But thank you very much. I mean, this is awesome. And Scott, thanks for showing it. Teachers, thank you very much for coming out and for all that you do. Parents, everyone, this is awesome. We're here every other Thursday. And this actually will be airing this weekend, this school committee meeting. So if you wanna watch yourself on TV, guys, it'll be on this weekend, right, Saturday? Turn off the cartoons, put on LCTV, and watch yourself at the school committee meeting.
When it gets played, we'll be able to post a link to one of the YouTube videos of the student presentations.
Kirby's shaking his head.
I took care of that already.
We have excellent job as acting chairman.
Hand you back to Daryl. We were on target to be out of here by nine tonight, so maybe we could stay there.
My apologies for being late, but I did come in at the end. And what I saw, I can only echo what Chuck was just saying. It's emotional. It's great seeing the children do what they do. And I know it's because of you parents, the educators, the teachers. Thank you all. And so the administrators too. This is wonderful. So, congratulations, I applaud you guys. So where are we in the agenda?
Top half to follow. Never go after kids or dogs. You know, as Scott said, I too am really, really pleased to be here tonight. And it's actually one of my favorite evenings of the year, my favorite school committee meetings of the year. Please don't be offended. Because we get a chance to really talk about what's going on in our schools and show you some examples of what we've been doing during the past six months or so. You know, I too, you know, have several, you have the handouts that I sent to you. I'll just review them briefly. And then, I also have a video to show you today about what we're doing with technology at Shaker Lane. As you can see in the handout, science maps have been completed using Atlas Rubicon for grades K to 2. We're moving straight into English Language Arts right now, as Scott said. That will be probably our most difficult task in terms of mapping to do, primarily because of the so many different areas that are there, I think, and the overlap between the different areas. Because we're not only doing foundational skills, we're doing language, we're doing speaking and listening, we're doing reading informational text, and of course, reading literature as well. But staff have been working hard on that, using early release days and other times that we've set aside for them to make sure that our maps are gonna represent what we really do across grade levels and in every classroom at Shaker Lane. RTI, we continue to have our data meetings three times a year. And I think I'm gonna probably get to the point next year where I won't be talking about RTI anymore because it's really become the way we do business at Shaker Lane. And when I talk about the data meetings and the progress monitoring meetings that we have, I think it's important for everybody to know that at those meetings, we really, really dive into where student progress is, looking at how student progress has been to the date that we're having the meetings on. What do we need to do to change our interventions? Is there more we need to do? Is there less we need to do? Do we need to change the size of instructional groupings? Do we need to change the size of the approach? So those aren't just data meetings. We're looking at overall class or grade-level progress. We're really looking at individual student progress as well. And we're also beginning to do the same thing at grade-level meetings in the area of math. We, in speaking of math... I have to say, we have, maybe we have 424 students at Shaker Lane right now. I'm not exactly sure how many families that represents. I would say probably about 370. When I left my office a little before six tonight, and the survey went out this morning at 10 o'clock, but I left my office a little after six, a little before six, 63 respondents had already completed the survey. So if that's any indication to the number of people that are going to participate, I think we should get some pretty good feedback as to how people are perceiving Shaker Lane right now and where they want Shaker Lane to go in the future. Technology. You know, when I talk about it at Shaker Lane, I talk about it in terms of being an infusion of technology at Shaker Lane. We were the very, very fortunate recipients of the Kimball Grant at the end of last year. Also very, very fortunate recipients of two iPad cards. Our PTA the other, a couple of weeks ago, decided to buy us six document cameras to add to the other two that we already have. So it really is an infusion of technology. But one of the things is so wonderful, that's so wonderful about it, is the way staff has taken this technology and brought it into their instruction, as Scott was saying, bringing it into the classrooms. And it's becoming part of what people are doing every day. And I'm so very, very proud of the way the staff has done that. During the summer, Mike McGeekren offered Tech Tuesdays. I can't tell you how many different times there was 10, 12 Shaker Lane staff on a Tuesday there for an hour and a half or two hours, learning more about technology. Couple of people went out and took courses during the summer, a couple more taking that same course that begins again next Saturday. We've also been offering something called Fun Fridays where Julie Lord, our instructional assistant, is in the building in the computer lab on Friday mornings at quarter of eight and staff is coming in to get that same kind of instruction that they were getting on Tech Tuesdays. And it is, technology is becoming part of everything that we do at Shaker Lane. So not wanting to be outdone because you know that well enough and no, I couldn't let that happen. Oops, I've lost it. Don't worry, I'll get it back.
Heidi did that seamlessly.
Yeah, Heidi, Heidi. And let's just see. And I want you to know that this is, what you're going to see in here is authentic. I walked around with my iPad and I took videos of what was really going on in classrooms, with the exception of the intros. I will admit that the promos were a little setup.
Awesome technology at Shaker Lane. Learned about it many different ways.
Sometimes these are iPads in class to work our phonics.
Can I ask what you're doing?
Yeah, it's phonics, like you, there's a letter that just puts a, on top of the thing, the, the, um, text that goes in.
Can you show me how you do it?
So I just tap it, that goes this way. That's how I do it.
Thank you. Can I ask you what you're doing? One thing that's happened is that we've integrated the iPods right into our word stations.
Okay, so the hour hand is red. Okay, so red hand to eight. Good job. And eight means thirty, wait until you see thirty. Yeah, you're right down the six, good job. Eight, fifty-nine, twenty-nine, eight, thirty, good job. Congratulations. Excellent. You guys are smart. Sorry, we can go one more start to get to the aquarium. Gage, come on up, five, thirteen. Then everyone will have a chance to work with a partner. So Gage is looking at our hand first.
Twelve, twelve, nineteen.
And that's a five. Nine, five, five, thirty, you already did that. Good job.
And then ready to practicing the same activity that Andrew taught.
So I'll see if he's very helpful in me.
So if you talked to me about what you can do?
Okay. Could I have another one of these like things? Either plus three, or two, then two more.
So where were those? Where were those things?
Once you start doing it right here, you need plus, you need to add them in. And you want us to one, twenty-one.
What problem are you using?
Pages.
Pages.
And then we write this over. And you can each have a cluttered page.
So tell me, tell me again, I noticed your story had pictures in it. Where did you get your pictures?
You just take them and then you go back to pages.
So it's taking these pictures and using corporate images. And you can include those in your stories?
When, um, Thomas, I finished that already, he did, um, another story and he did speech over.
Oh yeah, I did the same thing. I told you, not with you. And I see people do.
So quickly you manipulate.
You make plus, you need cables, charts, kits, and when you're in a chat, you can change the color. You don't have any colors.
Um, oh shit.
So I noticed that you're, you're already in a picture and not choosing or, what are you going to do with that picture? Why were you going to get it in there?
And you can mask the picture like that.
You finished the picture and you took a picture of it. Now he's fitting it into the story.
Stop shortly after that.
There was one more short, short clip. I don't know what happened. All the last clip said was, "Technology is changing the way we're learning at Shaker Lane." As you can see, you have to remember, we've only had these in our hands for five months now. And when I look at the, what students are producing and how it's allowing them to get, in some respects, it allows them to get work done in a quicker fashion, in some other respects, it does allow them to be more creative. As I said before, we've really been able to, we've been doing a lot of small group instruction at Shaker Lane for the last few years. What we've been able to do is really take our iPads and put them into those small group workstations. And when students are rotating through those stations, the apps that they are required to use are all color-coded. So if you're in the yellow group that week, you're required to use the yellow apps. If you're in the red group that week, you're required to use the red apps. And then you can go and you can explore other things. So it isn't just that students can come in and use any apps they wanted. It is very, very selected as to how, how they get to choose. And just a moment about document cameras and what they are, for those of you who don't know what they are. Document cameras allow you to, one of the wonderful things about document cameras is it does allow you to show authentic student work on a screen like this immediately. So you can have the document camera there and if a student is doing a piece of writing or if you're modeling a piece of writing, you can put that right under the document camera and it shows up on the screen. If you're using something from the everyday math journal and you want to show that right away, you put it right under the document camera and it shows up on the screen. It makes things quicker and easier to do, cuts down on paper. You don't have to take the time, I don't think we'll be using overheads anymore in three years. I don't think you, you don't have to take the time to either prep those nor waste the materials that are there. And it can easily just display authentic student work right away. So I've been really excited about where we're going, really excited about what's going to happen during the next year, and I hope all of you are too because it's been a wonderful six months at Shaker Lane.
You mentioned an overhead. A document camera, great way to describe that. It's almost like an overhead projector without having to make the.
It is, it is. It does more too.
Exactly. You can actually do an experiment and everybody can watch what you're doing when you're doing manipulation on models.
So we'll have eight in the building now. We're looking to expand. We have Apple TVs. We have, we have one Promethean board in one first grade classroom and we have Apple TVs in the other five. We have four Apple TVs in our second grade classrooms, but the other two are wired to be able to do the same things. I'm hoping they will have TVs by the end of the school year this year. And then we also have one in our library, one in our conference room as well, and also one in the computer lab.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Very good. Congratulations, children, please.
I will.
I think it was really cool about that, Rich, was he had, when one of the little guys was manipulating something, doing a document, said, "You can make the letters big by doing this." The other child came over and said, "How do you do that?"
How do you do that? There are all those opportunities there for extended cooperative work as well.
That's great. Question for the children. Do you know what we do at the school committee? Do you know why the school committee exists? It's ungraded. Anybody? Take a wild guess. Why is this, why do you have a school committee in your town? We're trying to figure it out. We need your help.
You're just trying to make the case for that Sufix course that you won't offer.
What we're supposed to do is to try to make it easier for your teachers and your principals to help you all learn. That's what we're supposed to be doing. So now that we think we know what we're supposed to do, how can we do that for you? What can we do for you kids in school to help your teachers and your principals teach you more of what you want to learn? Any ideas? Because I'm going to ask your moms and dads in a minute. So see if you can outsmart them for the moment. All right, maybe you're thinking of something nap has moms and dads talking. Very serious moms and dads, that's why we exist, is to try and make it easier for your children to learn, to provide the resources to the schools, the staff, everybody that's there. What do you want us doing? Catch is a little bit of a captive audience tonight. Tell us what you want us to do.
Reduce class sizes. Increase course offerings and increase, continue to PR visibility of the wonderful attributes of the Littleton School System to increase our profile with top-notch universities and colleges.
How do you think we're doing there as a district?
I think we're improving in terms of the visibility piece. I'm still afraid of budget, budgeting constraints when it comes to reducing class sizes and increasing course offerings.
Yes, ma'am. Others, please.
I'd love to see you guys think, start to think beyond the walls of the school as well. I think, you know, as, as technology evolves, there's almost all of us in, you know, in professional jobs have to work beyond, you know, just, just beyond Massachusetts, beyond the walls of our building. And I'd love to see, you know, schools even in the area or beyond start to use technology to work collaboratively and creatively with, and learn how to do that in an early, at an early age.
Are you familiar with the virtual high school?
I'd like to see a little public schools buck the trend that seems to be happening nationwide as far as any of the, the arts, any of the creative, you know, extracurricular type things, including, you know, whether it be sports or whatever, because it just seems this dollar shrink, those are the first programs to go. And if you look up elsewhere in the world, you know, those are used, some of those in some countries, particularly Europe, those are the last places to go. And you're seeing learning curves go up.
Suggestions on how we may do that better? Some of the suggestions you all have, they're excellent and thank you for that. Some suggestions on how we might go about it, that we could be a bit more innovative, to use the resources we do have at hand. It's the resources you all provide, the short taxes that we get to spend each year. What can we do a little bit better as far as how we spend the taxes, how we spend the revenue you provide us?
I don't think it's all just a revenue issue. There are a lot of people who have, who operate on a volunteer basis. And if we, you know, I think if you reach out in the community, you may be surprised what resources we have that are not going to cost a school anything to help with, you know, some of the programs I'm talking about or some of the other things as well. Perhaps be a, you know, a little thing to become a path, pathfinder in the way of instilling a sense of stewardship amongst the community and the parents that seems to be going the other way a lot in public schools these days.
I would like to offer, especially in the two-building jab here, and the elementary schools, grades tend to have more parents that will volunteer. Nevertheless, even in the middle school and the high school is a tremendous number. Across the board, I'm pleased, the more volunteers, certainly all the better, and I know they would all welcome it to have people in the building. But we do have an extraordinary amount of folks that give a great deal of time to now already. But certainly going out and targeting some of the T people perhaps, specific skills, it's a good idea. Thank you. Children, did you think of anything as moms and dads were talking? Okay. All right, everybody knows town meeting is May 6th. Come on out to town meeting, please. And it can go pretty late, especially for the youngsters, but maybe if you take them out for the first hour or so, I think it'd be wonderful. And then get as many folks there as possible. And Alex, I'm going to give you an opportunity to say something about pursuit of excellence, perhaps?
Sure. I just wanted to note first though, that with the help of Park and Rec, we're looking to provide babysitting services at town meeting again, and I believe that's free. So that means.
Are you familiar with the virtual high school?
I'd like to see a little public schools buck the trend that seems to be happening nationwide. As far as any of the, the arts, any of the creative, you know, extracurricular type things, including, you know, whether it be sports or whatever, it just seems that this dollar shrink, those are the first programs to go. And if you look up elsewhere in the world, you know, those are used, some of those in some countries, particularly Europe, those are the last places to go. And you're seeing learning curves go up.
Suggestions on how we may do that better? Some of the suggestions you all have, they're excellent, and thank you for that. Some suggestions on how we might go about it. That we could be a bit more innovative, to use the resources we do have at hand. It's the resources you all provide, the short taxes that we get to spend each year. What could we do a little bit better as far as how we spend the taxes, how we spend the revenue you provide us?
I don't think it's all just a revenue issue. There are a lot of people who have, who offer on a volunteer basis. And if we, you know, I think if you reach out in the community, you may be surprised what resources we have that are not gonna cost a school anything to help with, you know, some of the programs I'm talking about or some of the other things as well. Perhaps be a, you know, a little thing to become a path, pathfinder in the way of instilling a sense of stewardship amongst the community and the parents that seems to be going the other way a lot in public schools these days.
I would like to offer, especially in the two-building jab here, and the elementary schools' grades tend to have more parents that will volunteer. Nevertheless, even in the middle school and the high school is a tremendous number. Across the board, I'm pleased. The more volunteers, certainly all the better, and I, I know they would all welcome it to have people in the building. But we do have an extraordinary amount of folks that could give a great deal of time to now already. But certainly going out and targeting some of the T people perhaps, specific skills, it's a good idea. Thank you. Children, did you think of anything as moms and dads were talking? Okay. All right, everybody knows town meeting is May 6th. Come on out to town meeting, please. And it can go pretty late, especially for the youngsters. But maybe if you take them out for the first hour or so, I think it'd be wonderful. And then get as many folks there as possible. And Alex, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to say something about Pursuit of Excellence, perhaps?
Sure. I just wanted to note first, though, that with the help of Park and Rec, we're looking to provide babysitting services at town meeting again, and I believe that's free. So that means you bring a young bunch to town meeting. They sit for a town meeting a little bit, play a year, not so interested, they can just go right next door. And Park and Rec, they can take care of that, so someone to be, be aware of.
It's something we've been trying to attack, some of the things that you just brought up, is our Pursuit of Excellence Task Course. Alan's the co-chair of that, and I'm gonna have Alex speak just a little bit to that, please.
Sure. So the Pursuit of Excellence Task Course is a group of staff members, of parents, of students, of community members, all in Littleton, working to figure out where we want Littleton Schools to be, and then how do we get there? And we're definitely interested in getting as much feedback as we can from as many parents and community members as possible, and students too. Usually a little older than you guys, but you're certainly welcome. We're actually meeting this Saturday in the coop room in the Rupert Moore Library. I know parents tend to be pretty busy Saturdays. But if you're, if you're around, stop by. And if not, feel free to see me, and I will email you information, or see any one of these folks, and we'll keep you posted. We'd really love to hear more about what parents, what community members think is working and what is not working, and how we can keep pushing our schools forward. And I think in the next couple of weeks and months, the task force is gonna look at surveying not just teachers within the schools, but also the community as a whole. So you'll hear more about that, you know, when we're, when we're ready. I, I'm gonna talk with Rich Barry about how he got such great feedback on his survey that we develop our own to make sure, you know, I love those numbers.
Yeah, I was impressed. And Jerry Linna, Jamie Ian, and Mark Branco and I are also in that same committee, so feel free to contact us if you have thoughts or ideas.
And spread the word.
And that Pursuit of Excellence Task Course addresses some of the things you brought up, non-revenue specific. You know, how do we enhance, innovate, you know, the vertigeure to make things better without spending more money? All candor. Now, as exciting as this has been, we're gonna be discussing the budget in a little while. If you really want to have a good time, all right, Liz, I'll hold you up. I'm sure it's getting close to your bedtimes and stuff, and you're gonna present.
Yeah.
But do you want the children to stay for yours?
I have kids going to.
Yes.
Get the schools.
I can see what's coming.
Just to interject, if, if you do, if you don't know how to reach out to us, go to the school website. Each of our contact information is on there, so if you, if you come up with something after tonight, or if you want some feedback, if you want answers, reach out to us.
Good evening.
Start with Paul.
You're good? So I am really not gonna lose the point task next time, because it's even harder to go third. So, and Dr. Harrington gets a whole night to himself. I don't know how that happens. So, so thank you for sticking around. I'll go through the document briefly, and then we also have some students, in fact, members who are here with us tonight. So you've heard a lot about Atlas Curriculum Mapping, so I'm not gonna continue, continue to hammer that home. But as the rest of my colleagues have said, we are, we are moving forward. At the middle school, we're in very good shape. Almost all of our coursework is probably at the eighty to ninety percent level, if not higher than lat-loaded. And we've actually shifted to making sure now that we're looking at the Common Core connections and making all of that happen in our web-based mapping. So I'm very pleased at the pace and at the, the depth of the work that's going on there. And so in your document, you'll see that we've had a lot of early release time. We had a great overview of the Common Core state standards. Where Dr. Jamie had brought in a consultant to work with the middle school and high school faculty on that on the ninth of January. So we've done a lot, a lot of work with the curriculum mapping and the Common Core integration over the first part of the school year. We're in our second year of implementation of the new mathematics model and the Glencoe-McGraw-Hale textbook series. Very happy with that program so far. As we start to collect data, it's not only more engaging, it gives us better opportunities to meet kids at their entry level, and it's been, we've been able to differentiate the rigor of the math by offering grade-level math in seventh and eighth grade and accelerated math in both of those grades as well. So as the two, three, four years go through, we'll be able to collect more quantifiable data to let us know how that's going. But as part of the end of the year, we did do a program evaluation last year to at least take a snapshot in time to see where we were. And we've made some, some little tweaks in implementation and pedagogical trainings, and we're pretty, pretty happy with the direction the math program is going at the middle school. That's also the case with the World Language Model, that we made a shift. So we're in our second year of implementation. We're actually about to meet this month with Liz Kelly, the department head, and the World Language Team, and Dr. Jamie and myself to do a program evaluation there, to kind of take another snapshot, talk about how things are going. Primarily at the sixth grade level to talk about what we think of the World Language exploratory model and the benefits that we think we're getting out of that model, as well as how the A plus B model is going at the seventh and eighth grade level. So if you, if you recall, that's a half year of French, Spanish, and Latin one, then another half year at the eighth grade level. And if the child goes through both years, then they've met the equivalent level for, for level one at the high school, and they can clap out and go up to the second level. So it's really created a veritable six to twelve pathway in World Language that we're pretty proud of. But we'll take a quick snapshot and make sure that what we say is happening is really happening, and see if we can do a little bit of an assessment on how, how that work's going. Really, really happy with the next thing. We've talked a lot at the middle school about faculty-led PD and authentic professional development that, that can kind of come from the ground up at the building level. And when you have interests that come from the ground up and from the top at the same time, such as, you know, state and local mandates and federal mandates, those things can often crash hard in the middle sometimes. So we're trying to get a good balance, and we're really proud of the fact that we've had four opportunities already to have faculty-led professional development sessions this year. So Mike McGeekern did, using Google Apps and Introduction to BYOD early in the school year. Ms. Dorfman and Ms. Fennabacher, who have been chairing our Second Step work, which is our character education program, they led a professional development section with a faculty that was very powerful, actually led to a brand-new schedule model, and it led, led to a brand-new advisory model where every single staff member at the middle school, from myself down to teacher assistants, are actually leading advisories this year. Much more impactful, smaller groups. We have them gender-separated. So we did a lot, we did focus groups with students, parents, and faculty surveys to get to that point, and then had a half-day PD with the faculty to really talk about how to react to the data, and then how to make the change in year two. So really some powerful, some powerful changes in that program as well. Ms. Becky Fontaine is one of our BCBA's in the district. She led a very nice, early-release day entitled "The Role of the BCBA: ABA Therapist in Autism Awareness." We have a population of students at the middle school that we need to make sure we continue to have a better understanding of. And Becky did a really good early-release day session with the faculty, basically on the in-and-outs of the, the nuts and bolts of meeting these students' needs and how best to do that, so that everybody had a really good baseline of knowledge. It was a great Q and A opportunity for faculty to really just dig in and use. We even had parents in the district who had given us permission to use authentic examples, which was a fantastic, fantastic thing that they did for us. So really happy with those PD sessions. And finally, Ms. Beth Morgan, who's been co-chairing the Homework Study Group with me at the middle school this year, led a really, really interactive faculty session about a month ago on six different topical areas underneath the concept of homework. And we just met today as the homework committee in our fifth or sixth session of the year, and shared that feedback from the faculty with the committee, so that we can start to move forward and craft a draft policy for the handbook. Youth for Behavior Survey, you guys heard quite a bit about at one of your last meetings. And we, when we spoke, I told you that we were gonna do an item analysis and a data analysis of that. Ms. Bonacore, Mr. Gillette, Ms. Dorfman, and Ms. McCarthy, our school nurse, the four of them met on an early-release day when the other faculty members were doing Common Core work. They did an item-by，在-depth analysis of that survey based on just Littleton Middle School results. And you should have that report also in your package that I sent to you. And so that report highlights some of the things we're proud of, some of the places where we think we need to do work, and actually has some brainstorms for next steps and how to address those areas that we think we're a little deficient in. And I can't thank that team enough. Those are the four pros in the building that really are in tune with this work. And they did a very, they did a lot of work in a very short period of time to turn that report out for us. So now we take that report and we move forward. I won't talk about Second Step a second time. Academic Support Center, I came, sorry, I love the redundantly redundant phrase. I came to you last year, in the middle of the year, we talked about the Academic Support Center. You've heard a lot about RTI and that that's the way we do business in the school district at the elementary level. We are not formally doing RTI at the middle school, but we have obviously learned a heck of a lot from our peers down below us. And so we have an Academic Support Center, which is regular ed intervention for students who are struggling. It's sub-separate from our child study team, but it's also linked to it when necessary. And this was our first year to be able to actually roll that out from September 1st on. So really proud of that. It's embedded in the school day and after school. We are very fortunate to have two, two faculty members, two staff members, who are actually certified teachers, but working at the staff level. So very fortunate to have those people, people running that program, and they have another level of knowledge because they're also certified teachers. So we are tracking the results. Ms. Dorfman and I do Friday luncheons with those students to talk about progress. We have real-time academic supports, again, using the Google technology that Mr. McGeekern has trained us in, real-tying academic support plans that we can log into, share the progress with the students and the families, and then send those off to the Academic Support Center, so they can make the decisions during the intervention blocks based on exactly what's going on in the child's academic life at that moment in time. Can't quantify the data yet, because it's, you know, we're about halfway through the school year, but I anticipate seeing positive results with this group of students as we move forward with this program. Flexible library model, you also have a report in there that I actually really do hope you take a good look at. We spent a lot of time shifting, shifting from a very traditional elementary school library model, where it was a special, and it wasn't authentically connected to the work being done. And one of the things we really, and you're gonna hear about this tonight from the technology side, one of the things we're really passionate about at the middle school is really whatever we're teaching needs to be authentically connected to other disciplines, and someone said it already, but that I could, to the world outside of the four walls of the school. I have a middle school student myself in my house now for the first time, and all I hear every day is, "Why do I have to know that?" And so if you can't tell in middle school, in elementary school, I'm sure it's the same type of question. But especially at the middle schools, if you can't explain to them why they need to know it, they already are tick less invested than they should be. So we're really working hard on that. And this library model, albeit a very short amount of time, five, six months, has been a really nice shift, where teachers are using Google Calendars to sign up for flexible library space. They can work with the librarian. They work with a very highly skilled parent volunteer group that come in every single day to cover the times that our librarian is not on, on the clock. And the librarian also goes into the classrooms, so that if they're using iPad carts, or they're using school computers, or they're using, believe it or not, we still use books for research. So if they're using books and reference materials, they're learning from a pro on how to do that well. And so it's been really positive. The feedback is great. And as I check that calendar, it's fascinating to watch the few sessions that are booked in September grow and grow and grow. And now you've got people double-booked by accident, and someone else already figured out how to bump their colleague out. So I have to deal with that and give someone an indoor recess tomorrow. So it's a really solid program, so I'm very happy with that change. I would like to quickly mention the All-School Veterans Day Program, because we did talk a lot in the earlier sessions about community connections. That is a big part of what we want to do at the middle schools, again, open our doors, bring parents in, let the community know we're there, and that we're part of the community. We had thirty to forty local veterans that day. It was, it was a fantastic assembly. Again, Ms. Morgan put that thing together with the help of her social studies colleagues, all teacher-driven and then all student and teacher-run. It was a great, great day. And I really, I put that in here specifically as a connection to the community, because I think that was a very memorable moment in time, and I think it, my hope is it becomes something that we do annually for the community at this point. We are in the first year of implementation of Bring Your Own Device at the middle school. You have heard somewhat about that. We have a registration format. We have expectations for behaviors and monitoring. But on a positive note, we have, again, knocked down the walls of the classrooms and the doors, and we have students with immediate access, and it's less about what device they're using and more about access. So while we are using iPads primarily at some levels, and while we still are on cross-platforms, but committing to some products, it's important to teach kids today that you need to be device-agnostic. Because it's less important of what toy you have, it's more important that you understand that you need to be literate in the official, in the original sense of literacy, and technology literate at the same time. And those two things are going to be just as important as each other for all of those, so I swear, children. It's gonna be just as important. And, and so that's been really fun to watch at the middle school and watch that program grow. At the end of the year, my hope is that I'll have some more quantifiable data for how many times it's being used, how infused it is in the classroom. Anecdotally, I can tell you, as I walk through classrooms, I never get out and, and don't see it. If I go out every day, I'll see it every day in some fashion. It could be as simple as using an iPhone as a calculator, to a kid make a movie in the classroom, to someone doing a high-end research project in the eighth grade, and it runs the gamut. And so, and you've seen some great examples of how it's impactful at the younger levels too. So we've done some really good work there. And finally, just from an integration standpoint, Apple TVs are cranking, social studies in the computer lab, in the library, in the conference room, flat-screen monitors in a couple of classrooms, and in the library and the conference room. We're trying to catch up with Mr. Bizidlo and get one for aesthetic purposes and PR purposes in the lobby. And we are also talking about, very fortunate to, you know, have some funds coming our way soon. So we're talking about anywhere between six and eight document cameras, and the possibility of some other technology coming in. So again, it's not technology for technology's sake. It's still about teachers teaching children. But it is important that we're teaching kids access to information. It's, it's just done in a different way, and it has to be done the right way, so that, so we're getting the best bang for our buck, so to speak. So I will stop. Mr. Shoemaker, one of our, our fantastic technology professionals and computer teachers here. And I know Ms. Bonacore, I mean, as long as she did, but I think she had little kids with her. So I'm sad that she left, but okay. So Ms. Bonacore was here, our health teacher. Mr. Shoemaker is here, our computer teacher. And we have three great kids tonight, Emma Hartzell, Brian Provo, and Maggie Murray, who are gonna show you what they've been doing out of the computer technology curriculum as far as integration between that class and the regular ed courses. So I'll let Mr. Shoemaker kind of introduce these projects, and then, kids, you are on.
I'm Todd Shoemaker, computer teacher at the middle school. After watching some of these young kids fool around with the Apple, you know, the iPad, I was amazed. It was an aha moment where I, I think it was my sophomore year in college, back in the mid-eighties.
Use the mic.
Back in the mid-eighties, and I came back from summer and went to the computer lab, and there was actually brand-new computers there. And you hit the backspace and your error went away, instead of the type, I remember the whiteout and pulling down, taking the blow and nod and going back and all that stuff. When you hit that backspace, I thought that was better than fire. So after watching these kids with these machines, it's unbelievable now. So the computer lab at the middle school is really designed for, in the sixth grade, we try to teach them the programs with different projects that I come up with and, and create a curriculum for them. And in the seventh and eighth grade, we try to take the technology, you know, the technology, and use real-world problems and, and projects, and collect data, and, and make presentations and everything like that. So the first project here is gonna be, since Maggie, it's gonna be Maggie's project, because it's online. I'm forgetting her home.
Yeah, I don't know why we get the home.
Do you need sound?
No, we don't.
Then just unplug the sound.
They're all unplugged. Okay, so the first project, we're gonna start off with an eighth grader, Maggie here. It's, it's a project, it was collaboration with the health teacher, Ms. Bonacore, and she's not here right now. She had to leave. The class had to, were given, was given a drug, I guess. They were talking about addiction, and I was in the class, things like that. So they had to come into the lab, and instead of doing a PowerPoint, we made a Prezi. So the eighth graders were learning how to make a Prezi, which is a dynamic presentation software in the cloud, online. So they, they set up an account. They were required to use only .edu and .gov sites. So we're learning how to research strategies and not rely on .org and .coms all the time, because you don't know what you're gonna get. So some of the topics were difficult to find, but they did a great job there. So Maggie, you wanna come up and kind of show what you did and? This is an eighth-grade Prezi presentation.
Maggie, hold on one second.
It's the mic for the TV.
So my presentation is on bath salts. And that's also known as methadone and methylo. And we researched a ton of the nicknames for it, which are all shown here. And this is a picture of it. We learned like about things like how they're synthetic and man-made, and how a lot of times drugs are shipped into the US, not made here. These are generally snorted or taken orally, but they can also be injected or sold in a powder. And then we had to research like legal things about it, which was kind of tough, because all of the different states have all of the different laws about it. But I found it. It's like an emergency action that the government put in place banning these, because they're pretty new. So they're researching them right now. So right now, they're illegal, but they're being decided on. But there's a loophole right now, where they can be sold as plant food or bath salts, which is where the name comes from, if they're, as long as they're labeled not for human consumption. So they're sold online a lot of times. So they're sold online a lot of times. This is another picture. And there's stimulants, we learned a lot about like what it means to be like, have a stimulant and like depressants and all of that type of thing. And so that's what a stimulant is and it increases energy and alertness. And these are some of the short-term effects such as suicidal thoughts, agitation, competitive for violent behavior, confusion, hallucinations, psychosis, and all of the other ones listed Since it's a pretty new drug, long-term effects aren't known. This is another picture. And then this is like about like what exactly it does to your brain. Ms. Bonacore talked a lot about like how your brain's on homeostasis and so I had to do some research more about like what exactly it does because this drug like, it tries to bring your home, like it tries to bring your dopamine levels up and down at the same time because of the way it's engineered. Some pharmacologists think that it might be useful in treating end-of-life anxiety and Some of you might have heard about the so-called zombie attacks where people attacked others, another person tried to bite somebody's face off, creates hallucinations and stuff. This is another picture of what they look like. And then these are like the most important things that you'd have to know about them. They're not the same type of things as what go in your bath and they're really bad drugs, even though they're so-called designer drugs. It's different. And these are the sources, as he said, we only used .gov and .edu, so.
Thank you. So as you can see, she did quite a bit of work there to find out this information. And how'd you like working with Prezis?
I thought it was better than PowerPoint.
Better than PowerPoint? A lot more eye-catching and dynamic, so. All right, our next presenter will be Brian. And this is a seventh grade project. And what we did here, Photoshop, I like to, in seventh grade, we start a Photoshop unit that's pretty long. I think Photoshop's a pretty powerful tool to know when creating any type of presentation or any elements you might need, plus your grandmother might need you to take a stain off her shirt, make her compress her. But Photoshop's a great tool to know. And what we did here, we worked with the seventh grade science teacher, Ms. Stevenson, and the students were working about the, learning the moon phases. So in Photoshop, online, we found a picture of, that someone took of all the different moon phases. Well, there's, what was there, eight? Eight different phases of the moon. We have more than eight here. So instead of just cutting out a few of the eight that we know, we decided to use Photoshop in a little different way, we made an animation. Photoshop's a lot, people use those for still pictures, but in Photoshop, you can also animate pictures. So that's the frame that we took and then, close that out. And then here's a screen capture of Brian's work in Photoshop. On the right-hand side, we have probably close to thirty layers that he designed and copied. And then on the bottom there is the animation window and we set that to half a second per frame. And we added the text, the students had to know when to put waxing crescent on, full moon and new moon and quarter moon and everything that. And then we made an animated GIF from that, which plays right here from those still pictures. So it's just another way to use technology to help them learn so when they go in to take the test, they can think about all the fun things they did in computer class and cutting out the moons and everything, so. And that just opens up, you could send that as an email attachment, just an animated GIF that plays all out of Photoshop, which is pretty neat. So that's the project that we did in seventh grade with Brian. And Emma is going to show her, show everyone her PowerPoint. Now this is a sixth grade project that we do at the end of the year and it's, Ms. Bonacore left, but it's, it really involves Mr. Gillette and Ms. Bonacore. It's a wellness project and the neat thing about this with PowerPoint, they're using buttons. I don't know if a lot of you guys know about the action buttons here. Instead of just clicking next frame, next frame, next frame, this is almost set up like a website where they can click and go back and forth throughout PowerPoint. And we have a table of contents and, what's at the end there?
Terms.
The key terms. So if you have any questions throughout the PowerPoint, you click on the key terms button and you go back and it has a list of all the information. So she's just going to run through this and when you get to the table of contents, go to like sleep or something, it's not, okay, so she, and what they did, sorry, let me just read her what's going on. In computer era, in gym class, you guys did a bunch of activities, you tracked your data with your heartbeat, resting heartbeat and active heartbeat. They also did some project, some activities in health class, class like yoga, yoga and kickball and everything like that. And then they tracked their sleep for a week, how many hours they slept a night, and also for three days, they tracked what they ate. And they made a database of that and they also created some slides with that. So this is her wellness project.
We wrote in notebooks and then we just copied that down into PowerPoint about what wellness meant to us.
And this project is really an organizational project. There's so many elements at the end of the year for them. It's really teaching them how to be organized, where to keep the data, keep track of the data, make proper graphs with titles and everything. So this is, this project takes a few months to do. It's a pretty large project, collecting data, learning how to, the Excel project and many elements of this. So this is a table of contents. She can, again, this is PowerPoint, she can go to, let's say, the sleep section, so she clicks on the sleep button, it takes her right to sleep. She has the definition of sleep and if you want to see a graph, so there's her graph and how many hours she slept. In Excel, she created the average, average hours of sleep. Looks like she didn't sleep very much that one night. So then she can go back to her table of contents. She wants to choose maybe the diet section and this was a pretty intense here. Talked about the importance of diets for wellness. This is her food planner that she, we went online and she typed in her activity level, gave her age, and it kind of shows what you need to eat each week. And then we went to her day one and day two. And she filled in what she actually ate in those days and it kind of shows what, if she met the criteria for protein and everything like that. So again, she can go to day three. If she has a question about what is protein, she can click on the key terms down there in the bottom and it takes her to key terms and it has an explanation that she learned in health class, what everything is. And she goes back to the table of contents. So it's just a great, I mean, they have to set up the hierarchy of the, of the program and everything and show where the elements are going to go. She has to make sure the buttons all work and they go to the right page, so when they turn this in, she gets a good grade and everything. So it's a lot of thinking, a lot of organizing for this project, which is a great thing. Okay, she wants to show you physical activity. So her heart rate graph, the resting heart rate and active heart rate for the activities, it's like she kicked ball and step aerobics and did some yoga and walking and running and everything. So they keep track of all this and then they come into the lab and set up an Excel spreadsheet and work on everything. So this is in sixth grade, it's a pretty intensive project for them, so. That was her project, so nice job. It's been a challenge this year. We've implemented the Google, Google system and I had to teach all three grades this at one time because, you know, it's new to everyone, but it's been a great process and with technology coming up with new projects every, every year because the technology's changing, it's been challenging and fun, so I enjoyed it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're done. Okay.
Yep.
Questions?
So this is sort of directed at all three, I wanted to wait till all of the things were done there. You know, the, it's really great, the community outreach piece, that's very tangible to see what the connection of what the, what the action plan is and the result into the community, what resulted in the thing. Same thing with 21st century schools, the technology, these presentations, clear ties and the benefits are clearly coming up. What one seems to be happening behind the scenes is the curriculum mapping there, which is, it's more difficult to see the tangible impacts those are having. As you're going through them, where are we relative to how we, how we measuring up to the Common Core? What kinds of changes are we going to need? Are we going to have to be supplementing our programs in order to meet some of those things or is it, you know, what are we learning from that part of the process that's going to have either impact or changes as we're coming up over the next school year, for example?
Great article in the Independent today, where we're going with the Common Core.
Oh, okay.
You know, I'll speak from the data view perspective of what I see in terms of where we are and changes that we're having to make. Yes, there is some shifting around. You know, there are some concepts that have been taught in kindergarten that are now going to be taught in first grade and there were some that were taught in first grade that are now going to be taught in second grade. There is some areas, in the area of math in particular, where, I'm sorry, some areas in the area of math in particular where standards have risen and standards are higher than they were before. That's one thing that I've noticed as we've gone through the process. English language arts, I'm not seeing that many changes right now, although I see that there is some expansion. Not so much expansion in the depth that we will be going into. I think that the, the numbers of areas have been reduced, but the depth that we've been going into is, we will be going into is certainly a lot more. I mean, I think that we're in a pretty good place in terms of are we going to have to supplement our programs? I think to, I think we are going to have to do some supplementing, but we've always been doing that. There's no one program that I've ever been able to find that will teach you everything that you need to teach. So we will be doing some supplementing. Some of that supplementing will be done through the, through technology. Some of it may involve some additional purchases. We're not there yet to really identify that. But I think, you know, we're moving, I think we're measuring up pretty well overall, at least at our level. And I don't know what, you know, Scott or Mark would have.
I mean, we're at the middle school because we, I think, are, have more, we're more capacity, so to speak, with what's in the maps because we're already starting to look at Common Core. What I've noticed is now the conversations around Common Core are first, what are we already doing? I think that was, that's the most impactful conversation they're having now. One is a greater understanding of the Common Core, what it is and isn't, and how it impacts individual subject areas. So now that they, I feel like we've gotten a good handle on that and that will continue to be done through more professional development, but we're, we at least have an existing knowledge base now. So now we're at the place where we're analyzing what we, what's already in those maps in our, in our process and say, okay, we're doing this, 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 and we're going to identify gaps along the way. That's, that's the whole intent of this. You're going to find, it's no different than doing a large program assessment, you're going to find out where you are and that's currently what they're doing by subject area. At the middle school, they've had the lecture, been able to do this as teams, too, you know, with sixth, seventh and eighth grade teachers together. And when you talk about technology and real-world application, we have never been this transparent. Never have you been able to just have all teachers see everybody's curriculum maps and see that flow from two to twelve or six to twelve or wherever I need to look, I can look. And so as we get better at this and as we, as we have common ways of identifying everything in the maps, it's, you know, I'm teaching eighth grade, I can at a push of a button look back and see what kids did and why and how prior to me, or I can see what they're expected to do and how to make sure I'm on par. So I mean, that's, used to be in a three-ring binder with plastic sheets and, you know, and it's just, it's amazing how quickly it's here, it can be transparent now. So I think they're enjoying that and they're working collaboratively on that right now.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add to that. I think, it sounds like Rich might be a little bit farther along at Chicagoland. I think it's a process of getting what we're currently doing and our current maps into an electronic form so that they're manageable, we can see what's going on. And I agree with Mark that we're going to find maps along the way. We're not as far along to be, you know, really accurately comparing them to the Common Core. I think we're in the process of beginning to work with our staff around the Common Core and in the beginning stages of mapping our curriculum electronically and we need to meld those processes. So I don't think I'm at a point where I can accurately answer that question, except to say that I do think there's going to be places where we need to continue to supplement as we have previously. I don't think there's going to be huge gaping holes in what we do. I think we've always had an aggressive curriculum. I don't think the Common Core is asking a ton more from us than our frameworks had previously, although I do think there are, you know, places where the rigor is different and where we're going to need to do some things, but I don't think we're there yet to be, be able to give you specifics, at least at Russell Street.
Some of the areas that we're going to be working on are interdisciplinary connections, the emphasis on reading comprehension in content-based areas in the social science, history, science, particularly six to twelve. And there will probably be a greater emphasis on comprehension of complex texts and academic vocabulary. Those are the themes and the instructional shifts that we're going to have to take a look at and that will be, once we get the baseline of where authentically, realistically our maps are at this point in ELA, then we will do that work. But as Rich and Mark said, we can now take a look at where those gaps are with the press of a button rather than gathering binders and people, which is expensive in terms of time and resources.
I mean, nonfiction literature. You know, things like nonfiction literature become a focus, we're going to need resources, you know, those kinds of things, you know, so there'll be things that we, that we need to put some resources into, but I don't think there'll be gaping holes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question for Mr. Branco about the homework study group.
Yeah.
Can we expect to hear the results?
Let me stay on the Common Core just a minute.
Oh, you want to stay on the Common Core?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
First of all, thank you very much for your presentations. I love the fact that they're all aligned, the fact that you guys can, at the click of a button, see what everybody else is doing, that's great. It made it a lot easier for us to have everything aligned. I like the format, you know, it was contiguous. It was much easier for everybody in general to follow along and I think you guys have great relationships and there is a lot of sharing and it's a natural path from K to twelve. What I, as the but, let's be uncommon. Let's strive for common. I understand it's a state standard, but everything that you guys just said was just, let's reach for the bar and there's gaps there, just reaching for the bar. Let's get over the bar. That's the whole, what you're working on, right? So that, I just want to make sure that we're setting the bar a little bit higher than the common. I want to be uncommon.
So remember the Finland presentation and remember that Massachusetts is comparing themselves to the top two countries in the world.
Yeah, and thanks for bringing that up.
So I just want to make sure you remember like Common Core is really set in a lot of the work that Massachusetts is doing. So really, you know, keep, don't use common, don't slip into using common in a negative way, please, because we're not, we're right there with you, we're not.
And we're not understanding you well, at least I'm not. I'm going to speculate for a moment. A lot of your discussion, as you describe and where you are in the common, in the majority of sense, was administrative issues. Because we'd like to think at the educational level, we're beyond that, that we're beyond what the Common Core is going to bring. There were some differences, I understand, and you mentioned very good with the nonfiction literature, where the Common Core has a much greater emphasis on that. So that's just different reading, I don't want to say reading is reading, but for the most part it is, is reading for entertainment. I'm not going to lecture you guys, you know this stuff. So we were, in Massachusetts, we were reading some things, we're reading different swaths of the literature as we took our kids to school. So that's just a difference. I don't see that as an improvement one way or the other, you know, as far as intellectual content, if you will, I could buy into that. But I'd certainly like to think that you're struggling with the administrative piece of this, not with the educational piece. We'd like to think you already not educate the kids at a level, and Mark, as you just kind of mentioned, remember the Finland presentation? If Massachusetts is based on that common test given across various nations, we're fourth as a nation in our Commonwealth, then we're well above the common. So we already are uncommon. So we already are uncommon, in a very good sense.
Which is why I wanted...
And, and I guess you're speaking, it's very technically, and that might be causing us to be trapped a little bit in the words you're using. So, a sejara concerns here, if you will, you're teaching above the Common Core already. Is that, is that a real positive yes?
I wanna make sure you're, I'm stuck in the definition of Common Core.
The Common Core curriculum, are you exceeding it?
Let me, let me, let me do this.
Please do, because I don't like the hesitancy.
Well, it's the S.
I was, I was, it was a test for them. I was sitting back and listening and interpreting. And...
It's evaluation.
Let me, part of the evaluation. We, we are, we have a rigorous curriculum. The, the Common Core does a few things. It places a greater emphasis nationally on higher order thinking, the four Cs. We, we're doing a good job, and we're tweaking our curriculum. There's gonna be somewhat of a change in pedagogy in terms of where we teach. I created a chart for the administrative team about eight months ago, and we took a look at concepts, from concept introduction to concept mastery to higher order thinking, and I created a table and a chart. And when I'm in classrooms, I witness the spectrum, and that's what I look for. If I go into a classroom and I see that we're, we're teaching to the average, for lack of a better phrase to use, I'm not happy. I don't see that in this district, nor would I accept it if I did. The, the major switches in the curriculum, we obviously have grade level differences that need to be tweaked. It's not a big deal, it's just a sequencing issue. We still reserve the right to keep those concepts in the lower grades, if it was a lower grade to a higher grade switch. Our philosophy is to maximize the potential of every child. As we continue to move forward, we will be taking a look at inter-curriculum integration, and that's a fancy phrase for just simply saying, if we have a student in grade four taking mathematics and they're functioning at a grade five or higher level in math, that's where they're gonna be. They're not gonna be taking grade four math. They've mastered it, and they're gonna move along the continuum. This switch from nonfiction to, or the, from fiction to nonfiction resources, that's, that's a move, it's timely, in my opinion, it needed to happen, but everything needs to be in balance also. There's, there's benefit to both methods of reading. We're, we're taking a look at writing in a more analytical way, in terms of the kinds of writing that students do. Research writing, for example, is, there will be a greater emphasis on it. There's nothing in the Common Core that, that we haven't touched on. But you have to remember, last year, when, when I took, took the helm, so to speak, when I was looking at curriculum and doing an analysis, it quickly became apparent to me that we did not know as a district what 21st century learning was and 21st century skill sets were. Yes, there were conversations, but there were too many different languages. So the first thing that we did is develop a common language within this district, and also come to the realization that 21st century curriculum is not a separate curriculum, it's an integrated curriculum with what we're already doing. That in turn is intertwined or integrated into our curriculum within our district. Technology skills, we all know that we were struggling with technology in this district. We've made incredible strides in two years. The expectation that we've set for this district is that our students will be proficient in the Massachusetts technology skills, which are linked to the national skill sets. So what we've done is we've taken a curriculum like this, that's been specific, and we've added the 21st century skill sets, and we've added the technology skill sets. And we've also created an environment where teachers now are going to be understanding curriculum in terms of a grade or two before them and a grade or two after them, in terms of the class that they're assigned. That gives them a broader knowledge base, it also, it allows them to understand where these students have been and where they need to go, hence differentiated instruction. So we're, we're putting this package together, so to speak. We continue to professionally develop our staff. Technology, as you've seen tonight, is an enhancement, it's not a replacement, it's a means of teaching concepts and instilling knowledge. Chuck had emailed me today, I'd sent out an article, actually YouTube video, more correctly, and it really focuses on effective teaching and effective teaching strategies. We're doing a lot of those things, and as a system, we expect best practice. We expect our teachers to continue to grow, we support them, we use, train the trainer models more and more as we go on, we tap the talents of our staff, and we're definitely heading in the right direction. The Common Core is, is, a label, I don't like the word common, is, is an alignment, it's a bigger alignment. Massachusetts curriculum-wide was leading most of the states, if not all the states. I'm not gonna say all the states because I, I don't wanna seem smug, because I don't know that for a fact. I know we do a darn good job, but we can do better, and I think that's what we're going to do. Are we gonna settle for, for an average norm? No, never. Every student in this district, we aim to reach their potential, whatever that may be. So I hope that helps out.
That helps me.
It does.
Thank you. Do you wanna collaborate or anything?
Homework question?
Homework question? I'd much rather answer that one now.
Gonna throw you a softball, I mean, I just was wondering, I think there's a lot of interest in the community about the results of the homework study. So when can we expect to hear about that?
So, we've had five or six meetings. Darryl actually attended today as, as the policy expert, so to speak. So we brought our policy expert up to speed first and gave him a quick 10-minute elevator pitch about where we've been. Currently, the homework committee has had five or six sections. We have done a pretty in-depth analysis of research, and we've running documents and records of all of the research. Then we've done a pretty in-depth analysis now of best practices from 12 to 15 different middle schools, and we specifically targeted certain schools based on high-performing districts, based on comparable districts. So we had a cross-section, but everything, just to stay on the above-common theme a little longer, everything was, was up. We were making, we were making sure we were comparing ourselves to the top-notch places. And in some cases, we saw very antiquated policies and expectations, and we saw some that were more cutting-edge than ours. So really now, what we started today for the first time was, we took the research-based material, we touched, took the best practice material, and we're starting to work asynchronously again through Google Docs, and we're drafting the policy. So the policy draft has begun today, but it's taken four months and five or six face-to-face sessions just to do all that legwork. I mean, there's a lot of research to go on when you talk about this. This is a very hot topic nationally, forget about Justin Littleton, and so we're doing our diligence on it, and we are very proud of the fact, and one of the parents said it much better than I did, that we think if we do this well, then we will have the policy that's most up to date. And, and it's not just policy, it's gonna have, it's basically policy and expectations, or even brainstorming the possibility of parent, teacher, and student responsibilities being embedded in this expectations, so that we really have, it's a true partnership between the home and the school about what homework is and isn't. And it's really gonna be in Littleton, we said this is not gonna be generic, and nor do I care that we create something that's transferable. That wasn't our intent. Our intent was to create something that was specific to the needs of Littleton. That's why we did a parent survey, that's why we did focus groups, that's why we're running a committee. So the timeline now is, we're looking at draft policy, probably within three weeks' time, if that's a little aggressive, it could be a month. Then we turn around, kick it to the faculty for comments, then it comes back to the committee one more time, and then it goes to school council sometime in May, 'cause school council is the governing body that has to rubber stamp the handbook change, and then I'd come to you as late in the game as you allow me to, whether that's late May or early June, when we present our handbooks, basically. And, you know, Darryl, please, you were there for the first time, so.
Yeah, and what I was gonna do is, I was gonna comment on what I'm gonna try to do relative to the district policy, is, I think at our last meeting, Kelly mentioned, the high school is starting to form a homework committee also. And what I wanna do is, is have each of the building-based policies, procedures that will be in the handbooks, so that we can distill a better district policy. Because right now, our district policy is kind of a generic template almost there that doesn't have a lot of direction down. So I think this time, what we're gonna do is build it from the bottom up a little bit, and then at the administration level there, consolidate the guiding principles of each of the building-level ones, so that we can crisp up the district-level policy there. So that's the goal. The district one will probably lag, you know, probably till after the high school committee gets into a similar state here.
Mark, if I may, you know, thank you for moving forward with the homework committee. What I'd really like to see is, and you've probably done this as part of the package, is some like a, some type of baseline measurement in terms of how effective is homework perceived at this point in time?
Yeah.
Perhaps student, perhaps parent.
Yeah, we have that.
And the second component, as, as you're fully aware by looking at the Yarvis report, what kind of stress levels do we have now? And how are those stress levels gonna be affected with this new policy change, so to speak? I think that would be very helpful as we, we move forward and, and find that so-called magic formula, so to speak.
Yeah. We, I mean, we were really specific today in today's meeting. We said that we are not going to solve the country's homework problem with one committee and one policy. We're hoping that we have a unified agreement as a middle school community on the purpose of homework, the expectations of homework, and how those will positively impact students. But those are the three drivers: purpose, expectations, and outcome for kids. And we've stayed pretty firm on those.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you.
That's good. Let me recall, I said to the students, really the job of the school committee is to help you all, and I know sometimes it's wild than you want. But thank you for being so accepting.
Paul, as we find that their, their need to educate people is not just directed at the students, it's also educating us.
Okey-dokey.
Great, yeah?
We are, actually, we have two guests this evening, and both individuals are from the Board of Health. We have Jim and Ann with us tonight. I've had the pleasure of meeting Ann on a number of occasions, most often in a preventative crisis mode, but every now and again in a preventative proactive mode. So I'd like to welcome both Jim and Ann here this evening. We had a meeting and we talked about the agreement that was in place for our schools in case of emergencies, and we felt that it was time that we brought the memorandum of understanding back to the school committee, which you have in this package, and just make sure that we're still on the same wavelength. And the question I always like to ask, in this case, the Board of Health people, are we providing what you need to be successful if they're, if we're ever unfortunate enough to have some type of epidemic or disaster that we need to deal with?
Sure. My name is Ann, I'm the vice chair of the Board of Health in Littleton. Jim Greffy is our health agent. And over the past, I'd say, six years, Jim and I have worked together to develop an emergency dispensation site plan. And what that is, is in the case of a true emergency where there is a release of a toxin, a release of a bacterial component that will cause threat to the population, there needs to be in place a plan where the population is protected through vaccination, through prophylactic efforts, whatever. And this plan, which we're very grateful that you are willing to let us use the schools for, is a plan to put the population through the school in a matter of either 24 to 48 hours. We call it a throughput. And this is something that is mandated down from CDC through Department of Public Health, and we've come to a point where we are ready to drill it, we will be drilling it later in May, and Jim is gonna talk about the memo of understanding.
So, for the, for the, for our ability to do this, we need a facility that is big enough to actually be able to do the prophylaxis of all of the town citizens, including the people who may be in town, i.e. the IBM building, to be able to get all those people through in either that 24-hour or 48-hour timeframe. So we've worked up through that, we worked at the high school to actually draw up a plan by which we can bring the people in and get the people out as quickly as possible. We've met with fire and police to make sure that we have in place plans to do that. And the big component that's important for us and the reason we're here tonight is, I think it was back in 2006, we, before the school committee asked if we could use the facility. People change, you know, all of us change, we wanted to make sure that it was still gonna be okay. It's a critical component of the plan that we have. All the planning is done around the facility, and the facility works out very well for that. Any questions about the memorandum itself?
No, no, because I was here back.
Okay, go ahead.
We did this first time back in, it was six, right?
I thought it was 2006.
With Charlie, when Charlie Ellis was the chair.
Oh, right.
Nine, so nine, not six.
Oh, nine, yeah.
Okay. Well, and I know you're involved too with the development of the middle school into, you know, somewhat of a really good emergency shelter.
Shelter.
And I know that's, in a way, separate, but maybe almost in a way, together, with what your needs are. Because certainly, we think of the shelter, you know, natural disaster, more of that sort of stuff, not health-related, but it definitely could become a shelter as the health issues. So how's that integration working? When, if it were to be that pandemic, release of toxins or bacterial agents, whatever, and we're trying to use it as a shelter also, you wanna use all the buildings now? You wanna expand it to that, or just stay with one building?
Well, actually, we use the high school for the EDS. We use the middle school for the primary shelter. However, we're also looking into expanding to different areas, because if there was an emergency on one side of 495 that would predicate that we could not use those buildings within 495, therefore, we would be thinking about more of the high school. But right now, we're just focusing on finishing work with the generator, finishing up that, those details, and focusing on the middle school for sheltering, and the high school is the primary site for the EDS. Jim?
I think, I think the reason that two of them are split, I think we probably would like to have had both in one place. I think when we use the high school as a shelter, the ice storm, I believe, we found that it just didn't have the capacity generational-wise to actually be able to do that. It still works out very well for the dispensing site, because it's got the multi-root access to it, so you could have traffic come up New Estate Road if you wanted, you could have traffic coming off of 2A. It allows us to control traffic a little better.
And you know the middle school, that the electricity's gonna be taken care of in some way, shape, or form to help the ability there.
And that's great, thank you. Just worked on it.
Yeah, that's everybody in town working together on that one.
That's good.
It's great.
And certainly, we have to have a secondary site for you that is, you know, up and running, and how you wanna grow that, so to speak, because we start talking about plumes and directional plume, and all that kinda stuff, things you were talking about. So we're supportive, is the bottom line. The ending is, we're supportive of what you need, and even your grand thoughts, what do we need you to make it happen for you all?
Can I ask, the MOU or MoA that is in place, is that for a specific facility, is it for, with the school department for use of the school facilities?
It would be for the high school, in the case of the dispensing site.
I didn't see it.
First paragraph, first line.
Ours is our facility.
Ours is blank, it just says our facility. It's up and back here, so I didn't know if it was a specific building, or, and would we be looking to extend this to other buildings, or, was that your question?
I do. And I know it's not easy, maybe you weren't expecting that offer from us.
Expand what?
No, it's all four buildings. They're all available for you.
Okay, thank you.
You know, they're town property, they're town buildings, it's all our town. What do we need to do to take care of us? So if you wanna sign an MOU with us, that's just one building, you'll call, but I'm willing, certainly willing to suggest it to all of us, that we let all four of your buildings, all four of our buildings be available to you, and that you develop your plans as necessary, that's your business, to be able to use all four.
Thank you. I think that going forward with the shelter plans, we have talked about different sites, and superintendent's been very open to talking about using maybe the Chico Lane, maybe using the other buildings as needed, and so at this point, I think we'll start with the middle school and we'll finish with that. As far as the EDS goes, the CDC requirement that we're fulfilling tonight by having you all look at the MOU and sign it is site-specific. So if in the future we do need to expand to another building, we'll come back with another document and have that signed. So I think we'll start with, with one, but thank you so much. It may, it may be needed, and it may not even be possible to use the high school if there's something that way that's, you know, blowing in the wrong way, so, you know, we're open to that.
So if you're fulfilling a specific statutory or policy square, so to speak, where you're gonna have a specific site in the MOU, okey-dokey. You come back to us in two weeks, say, I want all four buildings, you put all four down there, I think you guys are gonna sign off for you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I'll tell you why, in this case, it's site-specific. The materials that they may actually send out to treat individuals, there's, there's something called a strategic, strategic national stockpile.
Yes.
Different locations throughout the country where they have all this material stored. We don't know where they are, they know where we are, so in the event that we need the material, they have the address of the high school, and we call up and say, we're ready, they're gonna push this up to the high school. That's the purpose of our mission. That's the purpose of our mission. And again, we do appreciate all the offering.
Do we need a motion here?
Yeah, we will. First, make a motion. And then we'll take a second.
Make a motion that we sign the MOU to use the high school as dispensing strategic national stockpile dispensing location.
Okay. Is there a second? Second. Motion made a second and for the mass dispensing site location, be looked in high school. Further discussion?
No.
Kelly, you got anything to add?
No, I'm certainly happy with the agreement that's in place and have no concerns.
We've covered everything you need.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, you've been great at this.
We will.
Yep.
Just having a discussion.
Okay.
And we're about to have a vote.
Oh, okay.
So if we've addressed everything you need, we're going to take the vote.
Great.
Thank you.
Ball is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, it's unanimous. So you're going to need your signature and mine.
That's right.
Who signs first? Is there a protocol to that?
No, you can sign first.
Do we get to exchange pens?
No.
And you just need to sign with one pen.
Yeah.
And I just need you to sign right there, if you don't mind.
Sure.
For your superintendent.
Yep.
I'd like Steve Marks to sign there.
I'll do that, thank you.
Thank you.
And again, thank you very much for all the support we've had from the school departments for any of the things we've needed to do.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So someone will make copies for our records and stuff?
Yes, yes. If you could send us a copy, that would be great.
Absolutely, sure.
Thank you.
No, no, what I did say, I hit the wrong button there. I'm not as good as some of these kids are.
There you go.
Thanks, Jim.
If you want to scan that in and send it to me electronically, I'll make sure we have it. That's acceptable to scan.
That's fine, yeah.
Sure. Great.
Perfect. I appreciate you coming out tonight.
Well, thank you very much.
See you.
Thank you so much.
Be safe.
Yep, thank you.
Okey-dokey. Jump into the budget.
Sure.
All right. Since the update that you and Mike gave us a few weeks back, we've had a FinCon board of selectmen joint meeting, and everybody seems sanguine with where we are in that process right now. In fact, I want to quote our good friend Paul Glavie, FinCon chairman, so he'll probably never speak again because he knows I'll quote him, but he was comfortable with where we are at this point. That said, we know that there is still a bit of a gap in the town's entire budget, so there'll certainly be further discussions. We'll be part of those discussions as we move forward. So that's where we're at, folks. You want to end with that? Questions?
This is, I have a question. I was looking over the minutes from last meeting. I couldn't be here, and I saw five items listed and said, items to be restored from last year's cuts depending upon budget availability. I'm wondering where we are with that availability and what the likelihood is that any of these items could be put back in next year.
Okey-dokey. Good question. Right now, that additive would be over 16/4, so the likelihood right now is not at a high level.
Okay.
Does that help you?
Yeah, thanks.
We're going to keep working at Ethan, because as the administrators, budget subcommittee refines things even further to find out, can there be some efficiencies in another area that we've missed up to this point? That frees up a little bit of money that can be perhaps used for some of those. Right now, or not right now.
I think that was raised because I had asked a question about, have we realized, have we gotten any of those cuts back to date? And what would, I think you actually follow the question with, what would it take for where to reinstate, you know, bring back everything that was current? And that's why that number was on there, and that's why that was in the minutes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Darrell?
No, I'll say.
Kelly, anything to add?
No idea.
Alex?
Thank you. Does FinCon know that we're looking for that money, knowing that it's not necessarily going to happen, but have we talked to FinCon and said, hey, this is something we'd like to do, we'd like to restore the cuts from last year? Have we made that?
Yeah, we provided that briefing to them. They know exactly where we are on that. Yes, in fact, we did that on Thursday, on the 7th. And that very next morning, we had forwarded to them, and we discussed it at the FinCon board of select meeting. So they are aware. In all candor, anything that we're able to achieve, so to speak, based on Ethan's question, is going to be done internally. At this point, I would not anticipate the towns to be able to ante up anything else, given that we're still short overall as a town. As a school committee, we support the expansion of the fire department. I think it's the right thing to do, given our town. So we're highly supportive for that. Obviously, that was about $165,000 more than maybe previously contemplated. So that's one that needs to be taken care of, that we need to help with something else.
Hopefully, at least named the acts.
Yes, yeah.
And I want to note that the selectmen, I think the meeting previous to that made one of their budget priorities, several of the budget priorities they made public, which was the, for example, the fire department, but also funding the school at requested level services, including the monies for the deferred steps there. So the town has already made a financial commitment there, so I think we're trying to be very circumspect about not going too much into that, given that there is still a, I think they identified at least a $300,000 shortfall in where their revenues are to meet those overall budget numbers.
All right. Thank you. Keep plugging away. Any other questions on that? Okay, new business. School committee start time, as we know, is something that's been inherited, and I don't know how long it's been the practice here in Littleton, but school committee meeting's beginning at 7:30, normally 7:30 PM. Hope for discussion, do we want to start earlier or later?
I vote against later.
I vote against later.
I would not be opposed to starting at like 7 o'clock, you know, because we are tending to run a little later than expected on a lot of these, and if we could maybe give back a little bit of time, that would be useful.
I would agree with that. Earlier, it's better for me.
Don't you? I like seven.
Okay. We seem to be having a trend built, consensus, so to speak. Ethan, what do you want?
I am fine with seven. I'm fine with 7:30.
And do you have enough time to get your homework done before you start at seven?
Yeah. All right. Thank you for your concern.
I'm always worried.
Kelly, any input?
I would be fine with a 7 o'clock start.
All right. Yeah, we all see our word, general disagreement on that. How about you, administrators?
I would say that we'll be fine.
Got any input?
My only concern would be folks coming in, maybe people are working, getting home late won't be able to make it. But again, if we start earlier, we'll see more of the, more of the parents, the younger of the lower schools coming in. So it's, if you lose some, you lose some.
And it also actually aligns us pretty much with the rest of the town, the uptown meetings. Seems to be the trend across the town at 7:00 PM.
Do you need a motion to change the start times?
Yeah, and then in that motion, put a commencement date, so to speak.
Any discussion on when we'd like to make that effective?
About next meeting?
Next meeting is supposed to start at 6:30.
Yeah, you're already starting earlier, at 6:30 next week.
Unless otherwise.
Well, we could either keep it at 6:30. When we set that 6:30 time, we actually had two schools presenting, but now we only have one, so we could move it to seven if you so choose.
Let's have one subject first. Sure. Okay, make a motion at 7:00 PM, please.
Make a motion to change the school committee's standard start time from 7:30 to 7 o'clock, effective the next meeting.
Okay, motion made a second and to begin, school committee meeting's at 7:00 PM is our starting time, beginning with our next posted meeting. So in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, so now discussion about whether it's 6:30 next week, since we only have one building presenting the high school, we can make it at 7:00 then? We all get with that?
It's easy to get to.
Okay. So next meeting will be 7:00 PM, not 6:30. Thank you. We'll go through that one quickly. Superintendent's report, please. John, make sure that's like in bold or something in your article, please.
I'll put it above all the kids.
Thank you.
Talking to kids with the start time.
I'm looking around. Everybody knows, you just said it, so. I see the jailbreak like that, trying to get out of my parents and Thanksgiving.
First item under the superintendent's report, school reports presented by Ethan.
We'll start with band. I was going to end with that. It's my school report.
I'm excited to hear it.
Don't get overzealous.
Second semester senior, you can tell.
All right. We're going to start with the high school then.
No, no, no. End with the band. Go on, Ohio.
All right. I'm going to start with the band trip to Florida. And we got back last Wednesday, it was an awesome trip, you know, for, I think, the 20 Littleton students there and the one Dallas student there. For those of you that don't know, Garrett Holman was a student here at Littleton until the end of last year, and then his family moved to Texas. He had already made the decision that he was going on the trip with us before he left, and his parents, you know, allowed him to come with us. So we had our 21st member of our group come down with us. I was hoping Dr. Harrington would be here tonight. They gave us a commemorative, we'll call it a trophy, for lack of a better word that I have, to commemorate our performance there. We performed Tuesday in Downtown Disney with a relatively good turnout. There were a lot of people that took the time to sit down and listen to us, and we had a good show. We got a great opportunity to play with a, or be conducted by a Disney professional. This is one of the people who is at Magic Kingdom every day, in the marching bands, and the people that play at Christmas, and at New Year's, and all those, all those big days. And he kind of walked us through a day of being a professional musician, how they prepare, how they rehearse for shows. And I think it was eye-opening for us, given how young our group was. We had a lot of freshmen and sophomores with us who really haven't been exposed to big shows and things like that. So I think it was, it was interesting. You could tell right from the get-go, there were a lot of nervous faces when we walked up on that stage. But I'd like to thank, on behalf of myself, my other captains, and of course, Mrs. Bridge, we'd like to thank the Littleton Rotary Club, LEF, and anybody that contributed to our fundraising effort. I think in total, we went just above the $3,000 mark in our fundraising effort. An accomplishment for us, and that's all, that's all I really have to say about that. If anybody has any questions about the trip, I'd be happy to answer them. I believe something was in today's independent about it as well, but if any was any questions.
Should that begin your vacation, I mean, how did it end?
That's, that's exactly. Well, the Littleton High School boys' basketball team competed in the Clark Tournament. This is an invitational tournament that's been held every year. This was the 78th year that they've run the tournament. And for the first time in Littleton High School history, our boys won the tournament. We defeated Quaid Bog 70 to 59 last Saturday. In come-from-behind fashion, we were down 16 at one point, and we fought our way, all the way back. We continue our action tomorrow night, 7 o'clock at the high school, against the Maynard Tigers in the first round of our MIA district playoff schedule. I haven't heard the official word yet, but our girls' team was playing tonight against Parker, Parker Charter High School in their first round game. Last I had heard, with about three or four minutes to go, they were up five. And I still have not heard the official end of that game to this point. But moving away from some of the athletics at the high school, a couple academic things. An eighth-grade parents' night, core selection night, will be happening next Monday, March 4th, at 7 o'clock. And the SAT boot camp is coming back, the program brought in from Catalyst. That will be this weekend. And as I said last fall, when the program came here, I think it's really useful, great value for what you end up paying for, and it's something that will really help you learn how to take these tests that, for sophomores and juniors, they need to start thinking about now, if they haven't already. Moving down to the middle school, the Littleton Middle School talent show is tomorrow, March 1st, at 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. I believe that's at the middle school cafeteria. The PTA faculty student volleyball night has been rescheduled, that will be Thursday, March 7th, at 6:30 PM. Also coming down, Pipe is another big trip, which is the eighth-grade Washington DC field trip, which will be going on from March 13th to March 16th. And the student-led parenting, student-parent conferences will be on the 14th, 20th, and 21st of March. Down at our elementary schools, Bingo Night at Russell Street School will be from 6:00 to 8:00 on March 8th. There will be Chris Lambert, the Channel 7 meteorologist, will be coming in, making a presentation for the fourth grade students on March 12th. And at Shaker Lane, Willow Book Night will be on March 5th at the Willow Books and Act, and that will be from 6:00 to 8:00. Kindergarten screenings will be on March 11th, 12th, and 13th. And I believe at that point, at this point, those should already be registered, so to speak.
If they, if nobody has signed up for kindergarten screening and has a child coming to kindergarten on next September, they should call the Shaker Lane office at 978-486-3959 and ask for Connie.
I'll go home and see if I have any more.
Oh, please, no.
And our last piece is that the grades close for grades one and two, and report cards will be sent home on the 11th. That's what I have for you this evening.
Excellent.
That's very good, thanks.
Good to know you had all that extra help. I always get help.
Next item under the superintendent's report. In her package, you have a request for a leave of absence for one of our social studies teachers at the middle school. I'm not going to go through the letter that she had sent. A few comments, though. This teacher is, you know, been a longstanding teacher within our district, very well-respected in the profession, and has done a tremendous job at the middle school in moving the curriculum forward. She has an opportunity to go to Vietnam for a year and work with an agency over there. And what's exciting about this is, you know, the fact that we have one of our professionals actually integrating into a culture that she actually teaches about in her respective curriculum. And you can't, you can't learn some of the things that she's going to learn and experience without being immersed in a culture. You can't learn it from a textbook. So, given that premise, so to speak, I feel comfortable recommending to the school committee that you consider approving a one-year unpaid leave of absence, so that our social studies teacher can go over to another country and experience the culture and bring a lot of experience and curriculum, perhaps revisions or tweaking back to the middle school.
If we say no, can we make her stay?
I would try.
She's fantastic. There is the potential for her to re-up for a second year, though, correct?
That's right. And I'm very hesitant in granting two-year leaves of absence. It's a long time away, and it does cause, in my, in my opinion, considerable disruption in terms of the movement of curriculum and student achievement through a, through a It's a long time away, and it does cause, in my, in my opinion, considerable disruption in terms of the movement of curriculum and student achievement through a, through a natural and productive learning curve or learning experience. So, I would consider it, but we would have to have the right checks and balances in place, so to speak. And we already have one at the middle school currently on a leave of absence, and it's all about balance. So, that would certainly be something we would entertain next year and take a look at where we were in all aspects of the school before I would make a recommendation to you.
So it's your recommendation that we grant the one year?
Correct.
And then she can resubmit, if she gets that opportunity to stay the second year, she can resubmit?
That's right.
For an additional year?
Right.
Go ahead. No, I just, I'd like to do whatever we can to keep Lily in the district, because she's fantastic. I'm my third child going.
Heading her.
And Adam, Adam had her when it was her first year in Littleton, his first year in the middle school, and he had a great team, and she's definitely one of the stars in that building. So I, you support it. Hate to see her go. Excited about her doing what she's proposing to do with doing, you know, distance learning and using technology, and, you know, creating just a lot of opportunities for the kids. But I don't think we're able to get her back. I can really do. I just took that, let it go, and see if it comes back. I forget, my aunt used to say something like that. You love someone, you love them both. Very pointy.
Or release the earth, if it comes back.
No, give me the.
Bob? Yeah, I think you would only, I agree with Chuck that, that she's a great teacher, and that I think would only, you know, enhance her, what she could provide to the district when she came back, so I'm all for it.
Yeah. Yeah, Kelly, prude recommendation, the one year, I agree with what you're saying. Reassess based on the facts on the ground a year from now. That's the best we can do. Two years is a long time, so I'll take a motion, please.
Move that we grant leave of absence, unpaid leave of absence for Miss Lily Fanabeker, as requested on our letter dated January 29th, 2013.
Okay. Your motion made, seconded. Polls favor?
Aye.
Please do wish her well in everything that you folks have said about being able to learn a foreign country like that.
Is there any chance of having Lily come to one of our meetings before the end of the school year? I mean, she's, she's done some stuff in the class, and with, she's got friends that think that are in Dubai, where she's engaged with them, and frankly, if I could maybe have some cookies and wish her well or something like that.
Just before we move on, over the last couple of years, we've approved several requests for leaves. About how many teachers do we have out on extended leave of absence like this? Because I know we had one for Japan. We've got one going.
We have one, right now.
Just one?
Yes. Certainly be two.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. It's time for discussion, for mid-year feedback with our superintendent. Principals want to begin? Nah, just kidding. Who would like to begin?
Sure. I think I'm gonna be fairly short. I'm very, very pleased here. Even tonight's presentations, the integration across the district, the integration of the technology, it's clear that it's trickling down into the administration and the implementation through our students there. You know, the test question to the principals about the curriculum mapping, and then the answer about how it's now a district-level look at the curriculum, again, matches the themes and things that we've asked the superintendent to focus on, one district, four schools. So I'm very happy with all of the progress that superintendent's made on all the initiatives we've asked and undertaken.
Yeah, I'd like to second what Darryl has said. Going through the list of expectations here, I just noted that there's a major one in technology, certainly he's embracing the technology, and we're seeing, sorry, with the students this, this evening, that they're, that it's forming throughout, throughout the district. I also wanted to, I made some notes about things that really weren't in the expectations, but were, what I'd like to call soft skills. When I first came aboard the committee, the superintendent took the time to welcome me to the committee, has made it perfectly clear that he's always available, he always seems to be approachable. From my perspective, has a good working relationship with the administrative team, and is just, I think, just doing a good job all around.
Thank you. My feedback is also positive. I just think that in the short time that you've been here, you've developed great relationships, and I think you value those relationships. You seek input from others before acting rationally. You're not a prescriptive leader. You get a lot of input from, from those that you feel will help you make a decision. I appreciate the fact that you're a great communicator, great teacher, mentor in many ways, and ultimately a good business manager. We are kept in the loop of any issues before they become issues, and I think that you've been the guiding force and guiding light for the district, and it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
As earlier Chuck said, in our professional ways, we've each had opportunities to go out and seek talent and hire folks, and use our best judgment based on what the needs of the position are, the assessment of the skills that, and the attributes that the candidate brings. And more times than not, certainly personally, I've been happy with those decisions, and then every once in a while, not so happy. But the latter's not the case here, it's the former. Certainly when we did interview you at the early get-go, you've exceeded everything that we saw that we thought were positive attributes that you were gonna bring, a steadfastness, a commitment, and Chuck said it well, as far as, you know, being able to listen and seek input. But as I wrote to you last night in an email, you're most generous with your time, extraordinarily generous. There's not been an event I've been to that I have not seen you there, and I think maybe everybody could perhaps second that. Last night, Relay for Life, you were there. Earlier in the evening, Ethan spoke about the tournament out of Clark University. And Worcester's a long way from your home. We're about halfway to Worcester from your house right now, aren't we? Give or take.
True.
So, that you made that trek out there also, and so many other events that you attend. Yeah, we could say that's in the job description, it's easy, but I don't know that it's in the job description for the amount you do make, and I am deeply, deeply appreciative of that, because the community sees it, and a great deal of respect has been earned by you, and rightfully so. So you've heard from us committee members, to go down the list of expectations, you know, you're there, whether it's the technology, your entry plan, how you want to go about it, the curriculum, how you articulated that for us this evening, it's sometimes you're able to be a very good translator, even though you're a Canuck.
Booing accent.
So we are most appreciative, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I've, you know, I have to say that I've been excited and honored to be the leader of Littleton School District, and I consider myself fortunate to have a school committee that always puts students to the forefront of their decision-making, wants to be the best that we possibly can be, and offers that support and guidance. And, you know, thank you for your focus, your passion for moving the district forward. It certainly complements what I'm trying to do as a superintendent. And if you remember back to the interview, I spoke very passionately about the fact that we're a team, we're not a superintendent, a school committee. We're a, we're a team, very different roles, but those roles complement each other, and in the end, we're, we're heading and moving in the same direction. And that's so important, as, as we continue to move our, our district forward and meet our students' needs. Well, thank you.
And if the proof's in the pudding, we are seeing successes. We saw something earlier this evening with the children, it's wonderful, that you've updated this all on tonight, and then just things that we see happening in the buildings, the successes, whether it's standardized test scores, activities. I mentioned Relay for Life. The number of children, children, young adults, high schoolers, and others who were there last evening, to give her their time, not just last night, but preparing to give over these coming months, and then certainly the Relay for Life activity on the 17th of May, we're very grateful for that. That's just a manifestation of the work you all do, and as administrators and teachers, and thank you all too. And thanks for the support that you give the superintendent. It's a hard job, as you know. He needs that support, in a positive sense.
Thank you. Just wanted to comment, you know, tonight's S I P presentation, it's the second year that we've utilized this format, and we, you know, we've talked, we spent some time talking about, I'll use Bob terms, Bob's terms, soft skills. And when you, when you think about what we saw or were witness here tonight, we're on the right track. To have students come into a school committee meeting, televise, and talk about what they're doing in their classes in such an articulate and passionate and confident way, that doesn't happen overnight. And to see students at that age be able to do that is, is exactly why we're here. And it is a little emotional, because it's hard for them to, to come to something like this, and it really is a culmination of whatever, what we're all doing in our classrooms to, to not only instill a passion for learning, but a confidence about themselves and what they can do. And to be witness to that tonight is real, is a real testament that we are passionate about educating the whole child. And these kinds of events, just, it's the, it's the proof in the pudding, so to speak. So, again, I'd like to commend the staff, and our administrators, and our parents, and the overall community for the support that they give us, so that, that we can put that fire in our students to, to want to learn and want to become better.
Thank you. I think item four, we'll be having a executive session tonight to discuss those items there. Is there anything you want to speak in open meeting on that?
Well, just a couple of sentences. We've been working on this proposal since September. We have had a number of meetings, you've had an opportunity to, to look over the primary resources, so to speak, in terms of the document, and we feel very good about not only the document that we produced that we're, we're gonna recommend to the school committee, but also the, the process and the dialogue, and the establishment of a firm direction in terms of having a tool or an instrument that helps our teachers become better, and is really geared to, or toward more correctly, that professional dialogue and interaction that truly makes a difference within the classroom. So, we're looking forward, moving ahead. It's a daunting task. My administrators have heard me say this many, many times, and in fact, yeah, last night, we were at a meeting, and it was very, very hard for me to be silent during the meeting, when we were talking about teacher evaluation, just because it is such an enormous change. And my, my, one of my roles as a superintendent is to make sure that the administrative team is supported, so that they can carry out all of their roles as a principal, or an assistant principal, or a central office person. And this, this new approach, we're gonna make it work for us, but it's really gonna be taxing on, on our time, and, and we're gonna have to be very, very careful that we still balance, to make sure that we take care of all of the roles of their respective positions. It's very theoretical in nature. The task before us is to take that theory and convert it into something that's practical and is truly gonna make a difference within our school district, and directly enhance student achievement. We're confident we, we can do that, but there definitely will most likely be some growing pains along the way, in terms of that time balance, so to speak. But I'm confident with the administrative team that we have, that we're cognizant of the areas, the traps, so to speak, and once September comes around, we'll be ready and able to implement the new system and move on to ensure that, that we continue to do everything that needs to be done to support the leadership role.
Trust is gonna be the key word in all of this, very true. We've given you quite a bit accolades this evening, and I know trust is one of those things that you've built amongst the entire school community and the community at large. Without the trust, the evaluation system will fail, and that extends on you all also. Everybody on the staff has to trust you, that you're doing the right thing by them all the time, and it's not an evaluation for score per se, it's an evaluation how do we all become better at this. And if folks sincerely believe that's how you're using the tool, you'll be highly successful. If they believe you use it as a hammer, it isn't gonna work. It's new, it's an environment that folks aren't used to, there's a lot of effort that you all put into it already. I think it's a good effort, very good effort. And reading through the rubics and stuff, and certainly other school districts, other states have been some of the rubics too. And certainly, some of the words, some of the order may be a bit different, but for the most part, there's an alignment that seems to be generated. So you're all on the right track. You gender that trust, you maintain the trust, and you're gonna be successful. That's all I ask of you all. And that's, that's hard. It's not because you're bad folks that it's hard, it's just because these things can deviate so quickly. One little slight, or at least a perceived slight, and we're off track. So attack everything early on, address it right up front, and you'll be highly successful, I believe. You guys have anything? It's a great endeavor. Thanks, Ed. We'll be working with the L E A to finalize that which you've all negotiated with them up to this point, so.
Great.
And then, as you say, we'll be speaking a bit more when we go to executive session. Do we have a date yet to meet with them? At least we can say that.
I had an email exchange last night, and we could talk more in executive session, as of yet not affirmed update.
Okay. It's certainly, our goal is that by the time we have our next school committee meeting, we will have come to an agreement with the L E A on that. And I think, frankly, we're at a level that we're feeling good about it, so. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If I may, just, on another thing, I just got word from Mr. Fontenot, that the girls varsity team won tonight by four, and they'll be playing on Saturday.
This Saturday, uh?
I'm not confident on the time at this point.
Okay. Great.
Great. Good.
I do want to talk to Relay for Life venue. Where are we there, please?
We've actually, as our chairman pointed out earlier, there was a kickoff for Relay for Life last night, and we had some discussion about appropriate venue for Relay for Life, where it should be held to maximize the potential of the event and also the safety of participants. And in the end, after reviewing all of the variables, we feel that the best place to hold this event would be at the track. So we finalized that. We feel good, all parties feel good about where the event is going to be, and we're looking forward to another successful Relay for Life, which is coming up pretty soon.
And they're willing to have more teams, folks. Contact Relay, Relay for Life, P O Cs, Elizabeth Brolia, Ella Duncan, high school students, seniors this year, Sue Harvey, one of the teachers at the high school. Get in touch with any one of them, go on the high school website, and check it out, please. Okay.
Be terrible, is something relative to the motion that we made?
Yeah, I'd like to just recommend we make a slight clerical correction on the motion.
Why don't we just get a redback?
Motion.
Can you read the back?
Okay, go ahead.
Just, I think with Chuck, in my notes, I wrote it down, Chuck made the motion to accept the leave of absence as written in the letter. I'd like to just amend that to be the one, a one-year leave of absence as recommended by the superintendent.
Okay. All right. So, let's see, do we need to do a new vote on that, to make this?
You would need to rescind the original motion.
Make a motion to rescind the original motion.
The original vote.
I make a motion to rescind the original vote, and then I'll...
Okay. One at a time.
Just two motions before I...
No, just one at a time. The rescinds at first.
I'm making a motion to rescind.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
That's a second. All right, Chuck made a motion to rescind the original vote on the leave of absence, and Darryl has seconded it. Any further discussion? Polls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, next motion.
Motion to grant the leave of absence for Miss Lily Fanabeker, from Littleton Middle School, for a one-year leave of absence as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion, favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. All right, we had a little civics lesson there. Thank you, gents. Arrested citizens.
Go.
Is that on the back there?
No. Thanks. Subcommittee reports, P M B C, Chuck. When we, when's the P M B C turn the track over to us, speaking on the track?
Well, there's a meeting next Wednesday. Lindsay from Gail is supposed to be getting us everything we need. There's a couple of punchless items that need to be taken care of, but we want to accept it conditionally.
I'm gonna ask you a question, and I don't need to put you on the spot, it's just somebody brought it up to me. Shot put, circle, a lot of level, is that one of the punchless items?
Potentially.
Is that a creative thing? Okay. Thank you. All right, budget we spoke of, safety and security? Anything?
The next meeting is March 12th.
Right, so that'll be before our next school committee meeting.
Right, and then I think we'll talk about some things in executive session tonight.
Okay.
I raise my hand.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Have we ever done anything, another DA come in and do things on internet, security and safety and that kind of thing? We've done the car accident before the proms and that kind of thing. If there's anything out there, whether it's the registry of motor vehicles, state police, somebody that has something on texting and driving. I know the state police, when they go through the academy, they watch some videos that are, we probably don't want our kids watching, talk about scared straight. But if we can incorporate that as a curriculum item for the safety and security committee along with John, have you done something?
Yes, I was actually on that. We'll just, your comments are timed because just this past week, I had a great phone conversation with a Littleton resident, mom of two students and seven, two boys, and I think in seventh and fourth grade. And she's also an attorney who's very involved and interested. Okay, sure. Your comments, Chuck, are very timely.
Because I just had, yes, I just had a conversation with a mom who, of younger students, seventh and fourth grade, who's very interested in a program that's end distracted driving, that's I think the name of it, ending distracted driving. And incorporates all kinds of distracted driving, whether it be texting or other things you could be doing while you're driving, just talking on the phone, eating. She, she's very interested in this. And we're sending a group of students to the state house. We had a message forwarded to us from the superintendent, actually encouraging us to send students. And we are jumping on that opportunity and sending students to a state house for a summit on distracted, about distracted driving. And so, they'll be meeting with student representatives from across the state, along with other school personnel. We'll send a team. And then what we hope is that our students will come back and present to our whole school assembly right before prom season in April. And also, we'll have this official presentation from this resident in town who's learned a lot about the distracted driving educational program and has a formal presentation to make. So, we're going to join forces, so to speak, form that partnership between our own students and faculty, along with this woman in town who's, who just offered her, on her own, out of the blue, she just, she contacted me and we were thrilled at the opportunity because it was, it was great timing.
Excellent. Yeah. That, that might be something we coordinate with Park and Rec since they put on our, a lot of our students put on our driving program.
Policy?
No, we're, no formal meeting there. We're going to meet, I'm going to meet with the superintendent on, I think, March 5th. We'll status the last batch. And then I think the business manager has brought to my attention a request to expedite review of the purchasing policy so that we can authorize purchases under a credit card, not just purchase orders. And we'll try to get that into the next batch.
Got you. If that's it, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn our open session in order to go into executive session with no intention of returning to open session. The purpose of executive session is for contract negotiations. And is there anything else?
Safety and security.
And discuss safety and security.
Second. Motion made second to adjourn from open to executive session, no intention of return for contract negotiations and safety and security. Bob?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Darryl?
Aye.
Aye. Anonymous, four zero. Hey, we're, it's right, folks, thank you.
Thanks, guys.